All right, it's six o'clock, let's go ahead and get started. Are we waiting for anybody on the Premier Point discussion?
Why, where it's a discussion, I don't know that we necessarily have to have somebody here. I know they were coming, but...
We want to wait, because I'm ready to move. Let's get on it.
I'll try to answer your questions, and if there's a question I can't answer, then we'll maybe defer it to later, or something.
Okay.
What they want.
It was fine. All right, so it's been through Planning Commission, right?
Correct. So this is the, so this is the, the final plat, and so I guess maybe, maybe, I don't know how much experience David you've had with the development processes, but we have, we go through two processes. One is preliminary plat, and that's where we look at the overall concept for development and say, yeah, that's going to fit, and fit the community, and it will work. And then final plat is actually typically, it's phased out. That development's broken down into smaller pieces, and this is the actual engineering and construction details is really what we're looking at at this point. So the, this was pretty, pretty straightforward. This is, this is over there along the drive in Lofer Canyon. The, the ground there is, the slopes are relatively gentle, you know, where the roads run down through there, and just weren't any real major engineering issues with this. His, his drawings are complete. You do, you do see, you've received a, a drawing that shows lot twenty-three and twenty-four have now been combined. They, I think it was the night before Planning Commission, or the day before Planning Commission, he came in and said the people who were interested in the one lot couldn't fit their house on one lot, so they wanted to buy two. And so he asked if they could erase the line, and I'm like, okay, well, just bring that in, bring that in, and so
Is that twenty-three and twenty-four, you said?
Yeah, it was, it was lot twenty-three and twenty-four. Now it's just lot twenty-three. And so, and so you'll see a difference in your, in your plan set. You're going to see multiple lots there. They're making that correction. So by the time they, they, it comes up for approval next, at the next council meeting, we'll have a revised set of drawings with that.
Is that the only change?
But that's the only change. So so obviously, the sewer and water connections there will be adjusted, you know, once the sewer and water connections removed from the engineering plans, and adjusted to match that. That, that change in that lot line, like I say, was done before Planning Commission, so Planning Commission did approve that that plat as shown.
Tell me what this tell me what this slope easement
So, so, the backside of the, of those lots
Yeah.
is, drops off, or well, it's, it's coming from above, drops down into those lots quite steep, and so preliminary, we looked at those, we looked at those grades, and said, we want a line drawn on there and platted that basically says you can't build anything up on that, on that steep drop-off, so...
So does that define the buildable area for the lot, and the backside of the buildable area?
Yeah, everything that's, everything that, between the road and that line is, you know, fair game for construction, but at that, at that line...
And that takes a bite out of twenty-three, doesn't it?
It does, but they're pretty big lots.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are large lots.
Well, it's four-eight thousand.
And they can disturb up to twenty-four thousand.
That's probably an acre or...
Well, they can, they can disturb it, but we've basically said you can't put any sort of structure
This is all engineering.
Right, up there. So I don't want them digging out to put a shed up there, or anything like that. That's a, that's a hard line for... If, if they want to go in and put grass on it, or whatever, I mean, they're not in Hillside Residential, so they've got a little more freedom with that, but
Right.
But that's why that's on there.
Okay. And the cul-de-sac at the end's big enough to dig the snowplow around in, and there's a place to put snow.
Yeah, where the, where do we expect the snowplow to push snow? How deep is that? That's a pretty deep cul-de-sac, right?
It meets our, it meets our current codes.
Right.
And it's, so you know, those, those lots are fairly large up in there, and, and again, this, this is compared to, let's, compared to the rest of the community, this road's relatively flat.
Okay.
So we're not going to have
Relative.
the huge problems with trying to get snow.
But there's one thing that I could share with all of you. It's the snowplow cul-de-sac resident, resident experience. That's what I would like to share with all of you on the council. As mayor, for the day they plow cul-de-sacs. Because we always get the phone calls, right? About how bad we do, we put, no matter what we do, the snow's in the wrong place, right? And, so every time I see a cul-de-sac, I'm like where are we gonna push snow, right?
Well, they just push it right up to my...
So...
Do you live in a cul-de-sac too yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, they just push it right through to my house. I don't know why.
Well...
Well, as long as they're not blocking the driveway.
Yeah.
And, and that was my, my thought process on this. If we could identify a spot and put it on the plat like the line says, this is the snow placement spot, so they're not surprised, and we just know that that's where the snow's going to go, and they're not going to obstruct or...
Or we just let the mayor get the phone calls, what?
It's, it's actually the staff.
Oh, yeah.
I guess the, I guess the only question I have is...
I mean, I don't think there's a whole answer for that on this.
That's where the driveways come out on the lot.
Or if we can just say the driveway needs to be on this side of the lot versus the other, so we create...
Listen, if you want the cul-de-sac, it is what it is.
I think it's fair for us to let them know, right? That where their driveway isn't, snow is. Right?
That's what I pushed it.
No, I think that's a...
But I don't know how to communicate that. I don't know how that gets communicated to when they go to get a building permit, you know what I mean?
So I don't think they're going to care at building permit.
They're probably not.
The problem is, is it's not the owner that comes in for the building permit.
Right.
I mean, that's the same problem, and when I do these site plan reviews, I've got this letter that talks to them about retaining walls, and, you know, some things that really affect them in landscaping. And I tell the owner, I tell the builders at the bottom of the letter that they need to, they need to walk through the site after, you know, as, as they're finally finishing up the construction with the owner, and talk to them about these items, and give them a copy of this.
Yeah.
But the reality is, I don't know that it happens ninety percent of the, the times.
No.
Because we turn around and we have somebody who...
I mean, at the end of the day, this one's not too bad because it's low. Right?
That's true.
But we need to think about this up in the south side. Because when we're up in the south side, it's going to be a problem, because there's going to be a lot of snow that gets pushed. This one's not so bad.
It must be a loss, I'm sure.
But that's a different subject.
Yeah, so do we want to, do we want to look at I, let me, let me talk to you about some, some different ideas with that.
Okay.
I just wondered if we want to go to a larger cul-de-sac, and maybe, and maybe with the idea of plowing into the center?
Okay.
So you just, I, and the reason I bring this up is, is I've just had this happen in my cul-de-sac, and it seemed like it worked really well. This, it's only happened once, but and they just raced right around the outside, plowed it all in, so it was open for it to get in out of your driveway, and and, and they were off.
Well, let's, let's have that discussion.
Yeah, kind of.
We'll have that discussion, and get Royce, or McKay involved, and see if we can't do better up in that south side than we have down here, so...
Yeah, because it will be a real challenge.
Okay, so that's, that's a difference, that's a whole difference. Okay, does anybody have any other issues in this particular...
There's no exceptions, right?
No, no, there were no exceptions on this one.
So I made it, so I had a request from him to do both the review and the and the approval tonight, and I specifically denied that, because I wanted to make sure that I hold true to the council. They'll always give you two weeks between the time you see the, the plat in the discussion, and the time you have to approve it, so... I know this was a pretty simple one, but I didn't feel any need to deviate from the, from that process. But I want you to know that this gives you time to review it, right? On your own, if you feel the need, and to make sure that, you know, you're good with it, because this will affect the city for forever, what we decided, so. There's no other issues, and let's go to the next let's go to the next thing. Coordinates ten twelve, planned PUD overlay zone discussion.
Okay, so if City Council asked Planning Commission to consider repealing the PUD, Planning Commission looked at that, and has recommended that the PUD be repealed, and so it's back to you guys. I don't know if there's any any questions, or...
We don't have to have a public hearing on this, or anything to do with it?
There was a public hearing.
Oh, there already was?
Yep, it's part of that process.
It's part of the planning commission.
Oh, great, I know where I missed that.
No comments really.
No comments or anything?
There was a couple of questions. Well, and, and by taking this out, it'll mesh with our general plan, where you're right now, as well.
And we've already kind of written it out anyway.
General plan, so...
So, next meeting.
Next meeting.
Put it on an action for next meeting. I, I expect then that there's no discussion on this, so that, so therefore anticipate that we will accept this from the council. If you don't have that plan, you probably ought to speak up now.
I've been asking for it to be taken out for eight years.
Because we're not going to have another discussion on it.
Okay.
All right, just go right on the, right on the council meeting, no discussion. Of course, you can have discussion in the council meeting. All right. All right, new subdivision, existing streets.
So, so this and then, this hasn't been through Planning Commission, yet. I bounced this off Royce the other day. Just looking at some of the situations that have, have come forward with flat stand, parkview corner, parksite cove, and the, and the questions over who's, who's responsible for what, and it, and you know, and how things get finished off, then other issues with people with single lots, and that they're, that they're developing, then the issue with the elders, and the question of how, you know, do we require them to complete half the street across the front of their property, or how are we going to handle that? I decided, since we've gone through some of those, and we've had discussion about them, some things have worked out well, some things not so well. Let's try to put something in writing in the code that we can, that we can use and follow. And, so basically, this, this amendment would go right in the section under the subdivisions that talks about what's required with streets. And that section in the, in the Development Code really is about new streets inside the subdivision. It doesn't really spell out what happens to the existing streets that are bounding the subdivision, that they may be putting houses and driveways into the front of the streets. And so, over the years, we've just kind of used common sense with it to, to try to to deal with those issues without really having a lot to back it up in the code. So this, this will spell that out, and, and I, really, the, the goal with this is to, is to make it clear upfront, so that there's, there's no question with the developers. And a lot of this is common sense. If they're on the existing street, we're asking them to, to dedicate the half, the half width of the street that would bring it up to whatever classification that, that street is supposed to be. We're asking them to make the improvements on their half of the street. And the other thing that I've put in here that is, is probably a little step further than you know, what, what most would initially consider, but if they're tearing up that street to put in services, we walk away with the street full of patches. And what I, what I've noted in here is for the, for their half of the, of the street out to the center line, that they go in and grind that down by one inch, and put in a one-inch overlay over the top of all that. So then we don't, is that going to cover all the patches? Well, if they've got some going across to the other side of the street, it might not cover some, you know, some small parts there, but everything that is associated with their subdivision will be finished to the same level, so that street will be finished, their, their half of it will be finished to the same level that we would expect the streets inside the subdivision to be finished to. So I don't think it's a, I don't think it's asking too much of them to, to provide that. And that's, that's probably the main thing that's in here, and then, just a, a description. This item number four was basically describing the issue we had with the elders.
Right.
There's, there's two options, the way I see it. We can, we can require them, we can require somebody to come in and finish off in front of their property, the, the full length of their frontage, but we want a minimum of twenty-four feet of pavement. So we've got two travel lanes, basically, in there. Or we can work out, like we did with the elders, you know, depending on what the situation is with driveways and that, that they can, they can do finish the full width of the street up to a certain you know, a certain distance into their property frontage.
Right.
So it gives us both options there, spells that out. So that's what, that's what I'm trying to do with this, and like I said, it hasn't gone to Planning Commission yet, it was just something that I bounced off Royce, and we started thinking about it, and realizing that we have some more phases of Parksite Cove coming in, and we have some other things coming forward that we're looking at, going, it'd be nice to have this in place, and, and have that clearly spelled out, so that as these things come in, there's, there's no question as to what's required.
Let me ask you a question, related to, to some of this. About a year and a half, two years ago, we went from a one-inch overlay when they were done on the roads, to just the slurry sill. And that decision was made by the previous Public Works Director, and yourself, I think you brought it forward.
So
Went with that direction?
So that was with the city engineer who, they, we went to a three-inch thick pavement cross-section, and that they put the three inches in right up front. Instead, instead of doing the, was it two or two and a half initially?
Two and a half.
Two and a half, and then, and then one inch overlay over that. And I, I wasn't, I actually wasn't in the middle of those discussions, so I don't know exactly why what the, exactly what that decision was. I, I can see a couple of reasons to go that way, just right off the top of my head. What typically happens is with that overlay, so it, so you bring in your, your two and a half inches, you're, you're either going to leave it short on the lip of the curb, or you're going to have them bring it up just underlip the curb, which is usually what happens, because you don't want a big
Right.
a big bump there, and so then, they come in, and they, they come in and they, they grind down a little bit right along the lip of the curb, but then what ends up happening is, is that's all that gets ground down, and so you actually end up with a steeper cross slope on the street after that overlay's done, so, you know, not three percent, you, you end up with probably four, four and a half percent, possibly, on there with the overlay. I'm not saying that's really terrible when you consider your streets at ten percent or whatever, but I, I think, you know, I can see where that may be a little bit of it. One of, one of the things with overlays is you have to make sure that everything is, is very clean, and, and make sure it's been, it's been oiled properly and that, so that the, so that the overlay sticks to the bottom asphalt, and you get a good, a good solid joint there. I don't know, I can, I can ask the, I can ask the questions, if I, I wasn't right in the middle of those discussions to know exactly what drove that.
Yeah, I just thought maybe we'd get a second opinion on that, given how the slurry sill went down on Delpris Drive. Some of the roads off of that. I mean, when they come out and clean up with the equivalent of a putty knife that's a little bit wider, and scrape it off the concrete, that doesn't give me a great deal of confidence in them.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
Another discussion on the streets and roads? So, to Planning Commission, right? Do we need to take action, send it there, or can we just still...
I feel that you guys want to, if that's something you want to... If you'd like us to do that, we will.
I would, I would recommend it. I would recommend it.
I think you should be looking at it.
All right, number four. Equipment purchase depreciation discussion. All right, turn the time over to Royce and McKay on this one. So let me, let me just, that, before you get started
Okay.
just update these two, our two new council members on this. Two years ago, I guess just after I became mayor, sat down and decided that we needed to look at all the equipment that we have, and create a depreciation schedule, so we, we set that, we sat down, we did a depreciation schedule. The first, that first year, we allocated three hundred something thousand dollars we set aside for to, one time build that depreciation fund up to where it should have been. We didn't fund it entirely, I think it was about, I remember how much we were short on, a hundred thousand, I think it was a pretty good amount. But we transferred three hundred and seven thousand dollars, and then, then this budget year, FY eighteen, we added another thirty thousand to it. So the plan is, of course, with the depreciation schedule, that we would eventually go ahead and rotate out our old equipment and replace it with new, so we've been looking at that, and there've been a couple pieces of equipment that's been due to rotate, so...
Right. The two thousand four, or two thousand five Ford F-150 was our first I guess really kind of our trial piece of equipment here, see, see how well this works. It came up this year for replacement. We've, we've found a good candidate for a, a new truck. We were able to work a dealership down on a single cab Ford F-150 two thousand eighteen with zero miles on it, brand new truck, for a, really a reasonable price. So we're kind of, can I throw the price out there?
So... Royce, you have the, you have a, why don't you bring that up?
So, a good factory warranty. This is a little lighter duty truck, like I said, it's just a one fifty, F-150. This would be a great truck to use, has kind of like the meter reading, kind of the gopher truck. It's got a little, it's got a smaller engine, a V-six engine in it, so as far as fuel efficiency and things like that go, it'd be a great truck, just kind of run around, read meters, set meters, that kind of stuff. That's what we'd be looking to use it for. The list price on it is thirty-five thousand, some change, and we've actually got it worked down to twenty-four thousand on it, which will fall close into that depreciation account budget that we're trying to set aside for that truck.
We had scheduled twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-six for it.
So...
Minus six thousand for surplus in the other, the one piece of equipment, so this comes in a little bit under what we had planned on the schedule between those two, so...
Yeah.
We're right at it, we're pretty close.
Yeah.
It's going to depend on how much we get the surplus piece of equipment.
Yeah.
For, so...
Right, right.
But we're, we're really close.
And this is the piece that was surplused in November, was it November?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is a truck that has already hit the surplus list.
So have we looked at the state's vehicle purchase plan program that they have?
Um, I've, I've looked with the Chevy one, with the Chevy dealership that adds the state contract, and they're about twenty-eight thousand. So this is still...
Yeah, I'm not surprised you get a better deal than what this in some cases.
In some cases, I mean, I know the ones we've been purchasing through, for SESD, we've been paying Ford upfront, and then at the end of the two-year period, we turn around and sell it for more than we have into it.
This would also be one, I mean, they're on KSL right now, this truck is thirty thousand listed with other dealerships, so if we wanted to get into something like that in two years, I still think we would...
No, I don't want, so I don't want to be in that business.
At least make our money back.
I don't have time to be in that business.
No, but if we have an opportunity to basically trade a vehicle out before we have to put new tires on it, possibly even have the oil changed, and we're able to trade it out and get another one, and we come out ahead, and we're in that position, then I think we should, anytime we can.
But I, I would agree.
And...
But I need a, a volunteer to oversee the that, because frankly, that's more administration, that, we've got so many things going, that's all I'm saying.
It's hard.
Well, I know, I know. It's hard to do that, right?
It's hard to find a truck.
It's hard to find a truck, but it's hard to just do the...
We want a four-door truck, it's really easy.
Are used trucks not, I'm, I'm just asking, because I was buying used cars, right?
Sure.
Isn't that going to be cheaper? No?
So, um, we've looked at, we've looked at quite a few used trucks, and we're, you know, eighty between sixty to eighty thousand miles on them, for right around the same price. So I mean, typically, like the ones we're looking at on KSL and different dealerships and stuff are extended cabs, so this is just a little single cab truck, so I mean, it's kind of base model, a little watered down. But it's just kind of hit and miss, I guess, too, and what we've noticed in trying to deal on with private sellers, is they kind of want, like, they want, they're not going to hold it, they're not going to wait for us. Every time we call them, they're like, well, I've got a guy coming this weekend to take a look at it. So the, kind of the private KSL-type cells have been a little harder to deal with, but...
So on the depreciation, I got a question.
Yeah.
So, I mean, obviously, the equipment has different lives than other equipment, so is that taking into
Yeah.
I mean, so like this truck would be, I don't know, it was like an eight or ten-year
Yeah.
Yeah.
Snowplows are twenty-two, twenty-three?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, everything's based off of use, and how often, and that kind of stuff, so...
I'll bring that in. We're, we're going to get to the budgeting here in another month or two. And so we'll bring all that depreciation schedule into, so...
So is this a good... I know nothing of trucks.
That's cheaper than I could get a truck for.
It is.
I think that's a good, I think that's a good price.
I would, I would probably go buy a truck if I could get that price.
Twenty-four Ks.
Because I don't know, you know what I mean?
It's a reasonable truck.
Yeah.
Right? I think it fits the need, where it's a single cab, it's four-wheel drive, gets us around when we need to get around, but yet it's nothing that we're going to be pulling equipment, you know, backhoes and stuff with, right? That's not what's intended. In fact, I'm like, don't even put a tow package on here, I don't want to, I don't even want to bawl, you know what I mean?
That's one way of keeping that from happening.
But, twenty-four, and frankly, I'll just be really honest with you. I think that we're in a situation now with an additional Public Works employee that we need to add one more vehicle to our fleet. And I'd like to see us appropriate, appropriate some money from savings, right, and pick, and purchase two of these. That's what I'd like to see, so that we, so that we, we need to add a fleet, a vehicle to the fleet. And then we're not going to, we're probably not, we have a, we have our F-550, the, the 550 on depreciation, and I think it's already due, so we're not actually taking any more money for, for it
No.
out of the budget for it, because we've already got the money we need to replace it. We're going to hold off on replacing that, because it's not a critical piece of equipment. Right? So if we did have a maintenance issue with it, it doesn't put us in any kind of a bad situation, so we're probably not going to rotate that piece of equipment out for a little bit longer.
Thoughts? I think I'd want to know what we have in our current fleet, and how they're being utilized, before I make a decision to add an additional one, above and beyond what we have.
Yeah.
Before I would... I mean, that's also a replacement of one that we've surplused out. Anything additional, I would need to know. We got X number of employees, we got X number of vehicles, and they're being used. We got X number of employees, we got X number of vehicles that are being used, so I can... So, I can feel good about it, yeah.
So, let's, so, let's make that, let's get that together, cause I'd like to bring that to these guys. There's no reason to wait, because if they say no, then we'll just double up, figure out how to get people to their jobs, right?
Yeah.
What equipment gets used and, and what, so the sooner we get an answer, the quicker we can move on how we're gonna deal with, how we're gonna operate.
Right, right.
Okay, so, but we will have to, so, so did we decide whether the approval to put the money aside was, or do we need to get council approval to actually make the expenditure?
We're gonna get council approval, so we'll do a poll.
That's what we decided, so I'm gonna do a poll. So, is there any other discussion? Cause I'm gonna do a poll. Poll, poll.
Just on the one, right?
Just on one.
Just on one.
Just to replace. We have to separate two, cause the other one, we actually have to make a budget modification.
We have a lot of budget. Yeah, there, yeah, it'll be a...
It'll be a bigger deal.
So, this is just a replacement?
Just a replacement.
Needs to be happened anyway.
So... So, what else is this gonna be used for?
Like I said, this will mainly be like your, kind of the errand truck, running around town, installing meters, getting meter reads for Laura and Royce, dropping off a garbage can. It's gonna be kind of that lighter duty type stuff, kept on that lighter end of installing meters.
Summer help, isn't it?
No, no, for the most part.
Just the old ones.
Yeah, yeah, the older trucks I like to keep in the parks. Make sure we don't, we're doing anything, you know, banging these trucks up. So, it'll kind of be that lighter duty, like I said, more of the runaround truck. So, and, and that's what I like about this one is it's, it's pretty fuel efficient. The, the trucks we have now are bigger V-eight engines. So, we spend, we'll be spending twice as much gas running around. So, this is, it's kind of a lighter duty truck and that's what it'll be, it'll stay used for.
Do we capture the use of this vehicle for water in the administrative money that we take out of the water?
That's where you'd capture it, yes.
Is that where we capture it? Is all in that one?
As part of that.
Administrative.
That percentage.
Percentage, okay. Just making sure that somewhere this is accounted for in the water, right, in the water department. Any other questions? I'll send that out and... Alright, Payson Water Discussion. Do you wanna start this one?
Yeah, how was your meeting?
I'm alive.
No, how did you think it was, though?
You know, actually, I think it went very well. We do have a meeting scheduled, a joint council meeting with us in Payson City that is on the, I think it's twentieth of February, if I remember right.
I think that's correct. That was a...
That's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And that is a third Tuesday. Anyways, the purpose of that meeting, they're gonna take some time to bring their council up to speed on everything that they need to be brought up, that gives us some time to bring our council up to speed. And then, we're gonna meet and we're gonna have some discussion as to boundary line adjustments between us and them, potentially annexations. It'll be at their building at six P.M.
So, we will have our normal one here then?
Well, it's in our, by week.
Oh, that's our third.
That's our third, okay.
Okay.
So, the, the purpose of the meeting really is to start working out some agreements between the two of us. Lee Haskell has some property that is currently in the county. Quite frankly, it is probably far less expensive for Lee to annex his property into our community and for us to provide the services than for Payson City to annex it in. In order for them to do that, I have to go clear up and around and shoe worn in and run water and sewer lines up through Allred's Orchard, which means combination of properties. They, they kind of do, but I think that if we play well with each other, we can take care of both cities' needs. And it will also resolve some issues with the commercial property Lee was looking at developing. The water discussion revolves around the area by the clubhouse and us providing water to that area. As part of that discussion, I think it's fair to say that there's gonna, if we go down that path, we're gonna have to revise our capital facilities plan because it'll be our infrastructure, it'll be our costs. And we'll pass it on through impact fees and, and so forth. I also believe that, I think it makes more sense, as, as Mayor Ellis previously stated, whether it's our straw or their straw, we're pulling from the same aquifer. And, so that's...
And they're gonna put a straw in.
So, so what do you mean by play nice? Like if we let them have water, they'll let us annex in Lee's land?
That's all part of the discussion.
All part of the discussion.
I mean, but that's what you're leaning towards, right? So, they will not, they're not gonna budge on this land up here?
I, I really don't think so, not at this point.
You, what do you mean by budge up here?
She wants her ground in Elkridge.
I wanna be in Elkridge, you know that, I mean, I...
Well, and Tricia?
It is a personal problem, listen. But I have, I've been nothing but completely open about that, okay, from the get-go.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and that, it's, it's, it's gonna be a hard read because you've got a new mayor, a couple of council members. Then they just say, you know what, if you guys wanna go ahead and have it, I don't know. It's, it's really gonna be hard to say, it depends on how far the staff work with and their involvement and the discussions are had between now and then.
So, what do we need to know going into it and...
Going into it? Just be thinking about how it's gonna impact our residents and what you want, what you want out of the, out of the agreement.
Well, I have a personal stake here, so I'm not quite to your face and say I don't, but...
No, I, I think that's fair.
You'll need to disclose that anyway.
But to me, it makes more sense that that's Elkridge then.
Well, when, when you start looking at it, the fact of the matter is...
The awkwardness of Elkridge.
Yes, they, they have an east side plan and they've got these things all laid out in their, their east side comprehensive plan. Well, you know what, they had things planned for the west side and it didn't happen the way they planned. I mean, they didn't have a temple plan.
That's true.
So...
It'll be a...
Well, too, and remember that those, that land that we're talking about for annexation, the front, the frontage there goes right along a street Elkridge owns with all the infrastructure that Elkridge has in place. And so, what's Payson gonna do? Run it through the back of the house? Run it down our street? Are they gonna pave or who's gonna, who, who manage, you know what I mean? It's a really nice, clean way of putting out this.
I think there's a way to make a clean break there. You know, we, we talked about previously in our council meeting, I think it was in November, about creating a proper buffer zone between residential and commercial and, and some of this. Well, the reality of it is, we need to have proper buffer between us and our neighbors, too. Does it make sense that one side of the street is Payson, the other side's Elkridge? Or should it be the back lot lines so that the services and utilities can be serviced more, more easily?
Well, here's what I wanna know, so say we don't, say we say we, we wanna annex this up here, are they still gonna put the well in regardless?
The well's already in.
Oh, yeah, okay, but they're not.
Are they gonna put a tank?
Yeah, that's what I meant to say, cause they're not...
Yeah, I'll tell you what, we were there, that sounded like they were already on, on track.
So, regardless, that's, that's gonna happen, no matter.
They were like, Elkridge ain't gonna do, do us any favor here, so we're putting a tank in.
And, and I feel like this also provides an opportunity for us to leverage the position that we're in in getting our new well connected to our tank, because this could expedite that. Because I'm not, frankly, I'm not comfortable connecting them until we have additional redundancy.
That's true, absolutely.
And if part of that process, the developer comes in and says, I'm gonna front X, Y, Z amount of money so we can run the water line from point A to point B, and then we've got some redundancy, I think I'd sleep better at night with that.
Okay, then this also brings up the whole Forbey deal, doesn't it?
Well, sure. But if we agree and they agree, no, if we both agree, then it doesn't change.
We're not writing the contract.
No, and that, and that's not gonna happen.
Are you sure?
Oh, I'm positive of it.
Okay, I don't know, I just...
No, there's, they, they had the property appraised, it came in almost four million dollars under what they were asking. And so, nobody in their right mind's gonna pay that much money.
So, are they still trying to sell Forbey?
I think that's off the table for the time being. And the individual, the individual who put the offer in has said he gets first right of refusal. So, someone comes in and says, I'll give you four, he can come back and say, I'll give you four, and he gets a four. The way that it's been set up, so.
I just don't wanna mess with that contract and then we have...
I don't think this will do.
You know what I'm saying?
And the way that that is written...
And this is already, this is already, um... I mean, this is already Payson.
Yeah, that's true.
It's already Payson, so there's no annexation going on with that.
But this will not let Nolan void that interlocal agreement, or will it? It'll, it'll just...
It only affects it. It only affects, it only affects new annexations and development.
Yeah, and the way that's written, if they agree and we agree, there's all kinds of room to go this way or that way. I mean, it's part of our discussion, we talked about all the way out to the highway and the potential to share commercial revenue as part of that agreement, if we play nice with that.
They seem very...
So, there's, there's still an opportunity to be had and that's part of the reason I'm comfortable with it.
So, you're telling me play nice, is that what you're saying, Nelson?
To play nice.
I will, and I don't care, I'm not going for a long time, and if I'm in Payson, I'm in Payson, I come to terms. I'll still write Elkridge on my address.
So, I actually had a little discussion with Chelsea, so it doesn't matter. Came up in conversation, not about details.
Right.
But she sounds like the, the new council mayor or actually, I mean, I actually think there'll, there'll be some agreements.
Yeah.
So, you, so you know the, about the, I mean, you obviously do about the commercial development they want to do in the little town.
We want some stuff.
And, and we'd like to see it more down, lower than that, so you probably are the one that's probably...
We, we can have some additional conversations.
I, I think we ought to.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, the, the commercial we're talking about down there, right now, it's justice is to living, correct?
Yes, and, and actually, under state code, if we tweak our code a little bit, you can build one of those facilities in residential areas, so it doesn't even have to be zoned commercial. They could go in and zone it residential and then if it never happens, it never happens and they could build houses on it. The other part of the discussion that we had was, they have this plan or vision as to what they want that area to be. So, if we do this, the lot size and the way that they had intended, whatever their general plan is, the, the thinking was to take and plug that into that area so that it's in harmony with what would be their east side plan. So, in other words, like down on the north end of town, where we've got Elkridge and Salem and we've got no streetlights and Salem's got the streetlights that you can see from I-15 and Spanish Fork. You know, if, if we had worked together, maybe they would have had dark sky compliant or at least it would have shown down instead of every which way. So, you know, I, I think we need to start having these discussions with our other cities as they start bumping into us. Woodland Hills is, is ready to start talking about our boundaries as well, so.
We've wanted that for a long time.
Yep.
So, that was the water discussion that we had and like I said, we have a follow-up meeting. Now, if you want additional meeting?
Well, I think you ought to have a little prep meeting on that.
Oh, sure.
Just us.
Alright, it's a public meeting.
Okay, I mean, yeah, we'll talk about...
But I mean, before we go in, Payson's going to do that, that's why that meeting is scheduled.
I wanna know what they want from us and what we want from them, so we're all on the same page.
I think you ought to have a list of all appointments and just make sure we're on the same page.
That, exactly. You don't want me going in there and trying to yell at everybody, no?
So, you don't have twenty different opinions in here?
Why try to ask me?
I, I think you're right, I think we ought to. So, I think maybe perhaps we somehow tie it into our budget discussion meeting.
Is, that's good, you're gonna, that's not gonna happen before you get this meeting?
Even though that's the twentieth of February?
Yeah.
Okay.
You probably won't get much items to tell me about.
Then what we'll do is we'll put it on a future work session between now and then. Cause we've got two council meetings between now and then.
We should do it the one right before, the week before, give us a little heads up on...
But this'll give all of us a time to kind of internalize it, think of additional questions that we have.
Well, can we get like a, will we get like a preliminary layout of what Lee's... Cause we never really got like a printout of what he's really trying to do down there, did we?
I think we can probably get something.
Cause it's really, it was kind of, well, he came to us and said, I'm not gonna pursue this unless this is an option, right? I'm not gonna put the money into doing all that, which I get, but now if we are gonna pursue it, then I kinda wanna, I wanna know.
Yeah, he won't know until after the meeting.
He has no idea.
Basically, what we have at this point is, and Shay put this together.
How many homes are we talking about, how big are the lots we're thinking?
Well, it's what are we gonna zone out of?
Yes.
Okay.
That, um, in the discussions that we had when Lee was there, he said he wanted to zone it similar to what? The lots on, on Goose Nest, the ones that aren't the really huge lots, but the smaller ones.
We had talked to, we had talked to Lee about R&amp;L twenty thousand, I believe, and that, that was what was in the, in the memo. He, he wanted to be able to have animal rights, but he was thinking of some of those lots potentially even going larger than that.
Than what, than a half acre?
Well, we would, we don't have anything else that we could...
Half acre and bigger.
Zone it as.
And how many acres were you... Twenty-something? Am I making this number up? What? How many, how many acres did he want us to zone, or did we...
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Well, he's, he's got...
But not all of that's gonna be developed.
Yeah, he would really like us to zone all his property in if, if we would, which is twenty-five, twenty-six acres. But, but we had told, we had told him that, you know, initially, go after these, his, his parents' home and the parcel that was right by that. Not the one that's further down, just because there's some other issues with people in between there. But with the, with your discussion with Payson, hopefully, it's the big picture discussion that, that...
It was.
Which is just, it was just the annexation.
That it's the, the annexation boundary would be the back of all of those lots that front.
Mm-hmm, would then be?
Gold Neil, I want to say Elkridge, but, and then, I'd just run that straight up across there. And so, in the future, you may have other...
And then we would decide what we, what we do, that would just change it.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so that's the discussion we're having with them.
Yeah.
And then we'll discuss the rest with Lee, I guess.
Yes, if it, if...
If we allow it all or not, or whatever.
If we can, if we can pull that off, then at that point, it becomes discussion between Elkridge and, and Lee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, if we wanna have this ready for discussion on February, whatever it is?
Well, we meet with them on the twentieth, our meeting's on the thirteenth.
The first meeting on February.
Thirteenth, it'll be our first meeting, our meeting in February. What we would want is to have some of the plat map, the county map or something, so we can kind of get everybody on board with...
I think basically what you kind of said, that we have previously...
Same one that we've been using.
Yep. Okay.
Same one that we've been using.
Okay, that'd be good.
We also need, we also need the one... We're gonna have to know how many lots they're talking about, how many connections they're talking about up in the, up here.
And they, they were going to get that to us.
Before the meeting.
That's what they said, that they're, they're engineer.
Can you, let's put on our...
No, this was Payson City.
Agenda item to, or not agenda, but a checklist item to tuck it.
And, and find out how many connections we're talking about.
Find out up in this area what they were talking about, cause they were gonna, they were gonna provide that.
Tell them we need a...
On the other side of the...
I, I think they probably got it, they just haven't sent it to us yet.
What else we need for that discussion?
Those are the only areas affected, right? Other than the commercial plot right here that we would turn to commercial, turn to residential.
Now, I, I think also along with the water discussion, I think we should have the discussion with them about the sewer.
I almost, I was just about to say that.
Actually, us, actually us providing the sewer, and it's a pass-through. Even though they're in Payson, they're gonna pay us because we have to be able to collect money to cover the depreciation and the maintenance of the line, because when they hook in their line into our line and it goes from here to there, we gotta maintain.
No, what I wanna do is I wanna, I wanna basically, on, on some basis, on per lot basis or whatever, we'll charge Payson. And Payson gets to collect the money from their residents, right?
We can do that.
We're just gonna send Payson, like they do us, we're gonna say, oh, here's a bill, every month.
But, but see, here's the, here's the reality of it.
And if the price goes up, so does ours.
When it come, when it comes right down to it, does it really make sense for Payson to drive their garbage truck all the way up there just to collect the garbage?
No, not necessarily.
Does it really make sense for them to run electrical lines and provide power to it? No. Does it make sense for them to provide the water? I mean, the fact of the matter is, they want a couple of things out of us. They want the property tax and they want the prestige of those homes next to their golf course.
No one in their right mind thinks of that as Payson.
Well, this is part of their east side plan.
I know, but I mean, I'm just being real honest here, no one looks at that and is like, oh, that's Payson.
But I don't know, I don't know that they've looked at all of the associated...
Costs and stuff for that.
Cause you, you really are, there's a lot more entanglement there than I think that...
They realize.
I mean, the reality of it is, some, if you went and built your house tomorrow up there, you know who would provide the power to you right now? It would not be Payson. It would be SESD for the next ten years minimum.
Tony, we've worked this out.
Yeah, I mean, there's.
We can work this out. We can work this out, so.
Well, we have ten minutes, right? Just kidding. You know what we do need to put on to discuss is the city celebration.
No, you and I are gonna have a meeting.
Where we're gonna come to Jesus Talk. A Come to Jesus Talk first, then we'll talk about.
A week from Friday, a week from Friday.